Jackson. And while Jackson's coming up. Patricia Noble, Jack Noble, Patty Hamilton, Rachel Gormley, Gabriel Savello.
Cibielo.
Cibielo. No, what did you say?
Cibielo.
C-I-B-I.
C-what?
C-I-B-I.
Go ahead, Jackson.
Alrighty, so, good morning, Senator Millet,
Good morning.
Representative Cornfield, and members of the Educational and Cultural Affairs Committee. My name is Jackson O'Neill. I am 14 years old and from Phillips. I come here in opposition to LD-798. I love the state of Maine. It's a great state. I've had a vaccine exemption that has allowed me to enjoy playing violin and cello in the local school orchestra, and taking honors biology and English, which I currently have straight A's in. I plan to continue getting an education here, work here, live here, and raise a family here. I know Maine needs hard workers, and I want to make it a better place. I'm already serving on my local volunteer fire department as a junior firefighter. I visited classes at Foster Tech in Farmington and signed up to take classes there this fall. If this bill passes, I won't be able to go. I'm planning to start taking college classes this fall, too. If this bill passes, I won't be able to do that either. I like helping people. If LD-79... Uh, sorry. If LD-798 passes, I wouldn't be able to enter the emergency medical field. Ultimately, I wouldn't be able to live in and serve the state I love. So I ask you, on behalf of citizens like me, to vote against a bill that would destroy my own, as well as others' future life in this great state.
A question for you. What's your favorite composer to play?
Um...
Do you have one?
I like Luigi Boccherini.
Alright. Well, nice. Gonna check that out tonight on my way home. Unless it's really quiet, and then that might be good. Oh, that's right. Okay, and next up is Jamie Robertson McIntyre.
June.
June.
The two N's look like an M.
Okay. Anyways, we know who we... Robertson McIntyre, welcome.
Senator Millet and members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is June Robertson McIntyre, and I am a junior at Belfast Area High School. I would like to explain to you why I oppose LD-798. I am a four varsity sport state champion athlete. I play soccer, basketball, and run indoor and outdoor track. I am also an honor roll student and have been nominated to be a member of the National Honor Society. I, along with other state champion teammates of mine, were guests of Senator Herbig here last spring, recognizing us for our athletic achievements. Because of my athletic success, I am being recruited by many Maine colleges and universities. If this bill passes, I will be forced to attend my last year of high school and college out of state. I ask you to think back and remember your senior year in high school. I ask you to remember how exciting and fun it was. I want to experience my senior year. Excuse me.
You're doing good, honey.
Sorry.
You're doing good.
I would want to experience my senior year. Sorry. With my friends and classmates, which some I have attended school since kindergarten with. I want to attend... Sorry, excuse me. I want to continue my athletic career at Belfast. I still have a few more school records I plan on breaking in track. And I want to graduate from Belfast Area High School, just like my mom, and just like my representative, Jan Dodge. I want to be able to attend Maine colleges that is best suited for me. I would also like to add that a vaccinated friend of mine, who sits next to me in one of my classes, thought that her cough was just the common cold, but then later found out that she had Wovin cough, and I never got it. As an unvaccinated 17-year-old, I cannot spread diseases that I do not have. I ask you to please oppose LD-798, and I'd like to thank you for my time, for letting me speak to you.
Well done, June. You made it through. And I suspect you're probably the one who's doing the best with being up at quarter past midnight in this room. Well, the exception may be Senator Puleyev, who has his hand raised.
I have three sisters. I'm the oldest. My youngest sister Faith is a junior at Coney High School in Augusta. She's varsity captain of two sports teams and National Honor Society student. She definitely got different genes than I got, for sure. My superlative was teacher's pest. But, you know, I hear... I hear a lot of... You know, I can imagine my sister standing up here, you know, talking about her inability to go to her senior year of high school. So I just want to say thank you for spending so much of your time here today and sharing your story, and hopefully you encourage other young people to get involved. Today, we just talked to the student members of the State Board of Education and about ways to get more young people sharing their story. So kudos to you for being here, and thank you. Good luck in your efforts.
Thank you.
Malcolm Holmes. Megan Fredrickson. Ashley from New Sharon. Okay, so Patricia Noble, Jack Noble, Patty Hamilton.
She's gone.
Rachel Gormley, Gabriel. Do not make me say her last... Did he leave? Sav... Savillo?
Oh, Cibielo. He's gone.
Cibielo? Oh, for heaven's sakes. Okay. Bear with me. I suspect this is gonna be a little bit of what we're gonna be going through now. Teresa Bridges. Pamela Gary. Dick Atlee. Pam Gary's here? Okay, I'm gonna read a couple more names. Pam Gary, Dick Atlee, Andrea Boland, Susan Wisner. Wiswell. This also might be a function of the copier. I don't know if it's copying everything. And then Ryan Witt, Andrea Loffler, and Laura Columbia. Okay, so Pamela.
Thank you for members of the committee. My name is Pamela Gary. I'm from Springvale. I am a former commissioner of York County, and I am the director of the Health Lyceum, Health Education Center in Springvale. I've been a registered nurse for 43 years. It's already been touched upon how this would usurp family authority, and I'm concerned that it would be challenging our Creator because a lot of us still believe that natural law supersedes legislative law. I'm also wondering if you have done personal due diligence on this issue because I've been studying vaccine information since 1980. There are a lot of loose ends. It is not a clear-cut subject. I'm surprised that nobody mentioned Bobby Kennedy's case that was decided this summer when the court ruled that the 1986 Immunity from Liability Act that was granted to the vaccine manufacturers was found to be out of compliance with the law. Bobby found out that, for the past 32 years, as a stipulation of that immunity that was granted to the manufacturers, they were supposed to submit safety studies every two years. And when Bobby asked them for copies of those studies, they said, "I'm sorry, we don't have any in our files." How can products that are out of compliance with the law be mandated? And I'm really surprised that no one brought that up, but it wasn't on the nightly news because these kinds of stories are selectively avoided. The herd immunity theory, postulated in 1938. You heard Dr. Christiane Northrup say that vaccinated children pose more threat than a weak link in herd immunity. And yet herd immunity is the linchpin that this whole debacle rests upon. People hate those who don't vaccinate because of the herd immunity theory. So you will be promulgating this hatred if you enforce this act. Now imagine a liability-free product that is also sold with the caveat that says, "This product will only work if 95% of the other population will buy it. Otherwise, it can't be guaranteed to protect." And that is the exact condition that these vaccines are manufactured under. It boggles the mind. It's really unbelievable that this could exist. I've been in RN for 43 years, and I was delighted when the special ed teacher mentioned changes that we have seen. We older people have been on duty for a long time. We don't see blue-ribbon babies anymore. We see children with dark circles under their eyes. We see diabetic children. We see allergic children. We see asthmatic children. Our children have changed so much in the 43 years that I've been on duty that it astounds me that the evidence that exists that demands a verdict is not being investigated. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you for your testimony. Dick Atlee. Andrea Boland. The Honorable Andrea Boland.
Absolutely. Remember that.
Thank you.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield's not here. Distinguished members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, greetings. I am Andrea Boland of Sanford, member of the House of Representatives from 2006 through 2014, and I'm here to ask you to please vote against 798 and support the integrity of Maine parents. I introduced legislation in the 124th through 126th legislatures to provide parents with a list of ingredients in the vaccines proposed for their children, together with a reminder of their right to opt out if they wished. It was a bill to give parents important information that schools and doctors were not providing and to which they were entitled, which they could refuse if they wished. The Maine Medical Association wildly objected each time. Their chief representative often argued that showing parents the ingredients amounted to, and I quote, "scare tactics." Well, if ingredient lists look so scary, why was the MMA seeking to suppress them rather than explain them? In the 124th, the bill was killed in committee, although the House chair, a professional nurse practitioner, commented that the parents in her practice who opted out were mostly the more educated ones. A doctor on the committee protested, "No," but the chair reasserted, "Yes." In the 125th, the bill reached the House floor but was defeated. In the 126th, it passed. The three doctors in the House argued strenuously against it, that parents shouldn't see the ingredients because they wouldn't understand them, that if they did see them, they might not vaccinate, that doctors didn't have time to explain ingredients to parents because they had too many children to vaccinate. The bill passed the House. It was progress, and at least parental consent was not on the line as it is today. Today, you have a much more aggressive message from Big Pharma and their allies. Just make them do it. Force children to be injected with our products. Punish them by depriving them of an education if they're not. This is an insult to legislators to ask them to take a role in their unscrupulous media blitz that works to gag dissent and put parents against parents, children against children. Remember, their history is to silence information, not share it. Please hold your professional and moral center against this intolerance of parental choice. Reject the tactics of predatory overreach in politics and vote down LD-798. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up is Ryan Witt, Andrea Loffler, Laura Columbia, and then we'll have Laurel Libby, Megan Spencer, Randy Cusa, Mitchell Brown, Laura Parker, and Jeffrey Slocum. Ryan Witt? Did I skip over somebody? Did I lose somebody? Susan?
Yes.
Susan, I apologize. Come on up. Yep. Thank you for the puzzled looks. That's very helpful.
Senator Millet, members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, my name is Susan Wiswell. I'm from Kittery. I'm here to speak in opposition to LD-798 and in support of LD-987. I have bachelor's degrees in both physiology and nursing. I have been in RN for the past 29 years. I have also had a prior adverse reaction to a flu vaccine, and if this bill, LD-798, were to pass, I would be forced to retire. Removing religious and philosophical exemptions from immunization requirements violates the spirit of both the Free Exercise Clause of the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 3 of Maine's state constitution, which acknowledges the natural and inalienable right of all individuals to worship Almighty God according to the dictates of their own consciences. All individuals includes schoolchildren, their parents, and employees of nursery schools and healthcare facilities whose rights would be violated by this proposed legislation. I cannot speak for all religious traditions, but as a Christian, I believe that my body is the temple of God. I would not pollute my church with pagan idols. Neither would I pollute my body or those of my children with known toxins. Even people with a more secular mindset may have a strong philosophical aversion to being injected with harmful substances. Along with disease-specific antigens, vaccines include preservatives, adjuvants, stabilizers, cell culture materials, inactivating ingredients, and antibiotics. Thimerosal, a commonly used preservative with a biological half-life of 20 years, is 49.6% mercury, a potent neurotoxin. Aluminum, an adjuvant used to stimulate an immune response, is also a potent neurotoxin. Antibiotics and egg proteins from the cell culture medium often evoke an allergic reaction. Formaldehyde, the chemical used to preserve specimens in biology lab, is used as an inactivating ingredient. Current CDC guidelines recommend 26 vaccines before age 2, about twice as many as my children received in the 1980s and 1990s. Another eight by age 5, and 17 more through the teen years. Most of this latter group is the annual flu vaccines. Many of these vaccines are given together at the same appointment. When I was growing up in the 1950s and 1960s, we all contracted measles, mumps, rubella, and chicken pox, recovered with no lasting harm and acquired permanent immunity. Autism, ADHD, and other neurological impairments were practically unheard of. Although the CDC denies a link between vaccines and autism, a strong correlation exists. Here in Maine, the incidence of autism spectrum disorder increased by 848% between 2000 and 2014, whereas fewer than 40 cases were identified in Maine in 1984. In 2014, a former CDC researcher, Dr. William Thompson, blew the whistle on the CDC for covering up a link between the MMR and autism. The National Survey of Children's Health reported an autism... Whoops, I'm sorry. I'm running out of time here.
Yep. If you could just wrap up now, please. Thank you.
The healthcare system claims to value informed consent while it suppresses information that opposes the official narrative. Informed decision-making requires access to information from both sides of an issue so that people can properly evaluate risks and benefits. Censoring one view prevents informed decision-making, and coercion is not consent.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, Ryan Loffler. Did I say that?
You did, Loffler. I agree with you.
Loffler. Okay.
Good evening, Senator Millet.
Good morning.
Representative Cornfield and esteemed members of the joint committee, thank you so much for your time tonight and for staying so late to hear us all out. My name is Andrea Loffler, and I live in Brunswick. I have been a pediatrician here on the coast of Maine caring for families in this community for nearly 20 years. My children attend our public schools. They play on their sports teams and participate in all of the bands. I care very deeply about this community. There is not time to address tonight the astounding amount of misinformation presented as fact here. You have further opportunity to address these and question us at your workshops with the experts who choose to join you. I've submitted my testimony in the interest and respect of your time. I would just like to speak on a few things in summary. I provide medical exemptions based on my clinical judgment. I do this every year. I have done it every year in my clinical practice. It's a decision that is based on my education, my experience, my medical training, and it's one I hold very dearly with families that I care for. I will continue to do so. I have never, in any of my years as a pediatrician here in this state, ever had any of my medical exemptions questioned. I don't follow the list. As you already know, it's not exhaustive. It's not... This bill does not purport to make that exhaustive list. Our judgment has been held up by our school systems, and I trust that that will continue. This bill doesn't rein that in in any way. And I would respectfully request that folks who have had difficulty obtaining legitimate medical exemptions, please find another doctor. We're out there. We're here to help. I have administered vaccines every day in my practice for over 24 years now because I spent four years in New York City before I came here. And I've never had a significant vaccine injury in any of my patients other than localized reactions to immunizations right at the site of immunization and low-grade fever, never more than 102. I've not had those happen. They do. I'm not saying that they don't, but they are very rare. We have a robust system to investigate them that helps inform our policies and decisions around further immunizations. You heard Dr. Losi speak to that when he talked about the change from the DTP vaccine to the DTAP vaccine and some of the consequences. We have chosen, as a medical community, to accept lower immunization protection to reduce the risk to patients. Our society, our scientists, have chosen that, and we support that. Community immunity... Someone spoke earlier to that. It isn't fake. It's not an antiquated concept provided only by natural disease. Vaccinations provide community immunity by providing individuals with immune system memory for specific diseases. That's how they work. And once an individual, if enough members have immune system memory to diseases, when those diseases are introduced to the community, they are not susceptible to them. Those diseases cannot get a foothold in those communities. Both science and history have proven that. Smallpox worldwide, polio in the United States. Vaccinations work, and community immunity is real, and it's very important. Our schools are little communities. It's where our kids hang out. It's where they go to potlucks. So in the interest of time, I have the education experience to make medical decisions, including exemptions from vaccination. I stand in opposition to LD-987 and in support of LD-798 to protect our community and ensure the safeties of all of our schools. Thank you for your time.
From Senator Samson, here's a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you just mentioned that you know of the medical establishment having a handle on the injury rates and the research on this. I asked a physician earlier the question of, "Is there a physician in the state of Maine that is tracking and researching the vaccine injuries in the state?" And he didn't know of any, so I'm asking you that question.
I believe that the Maine CDC does that, but we also... So there are physician members to that. There are physician members that are not part of the state of Maine but national members to the VAERS of Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, and they are tracking it state by state. I'm not part of that system, but I'm part of the VAERS reporting system, as are all physicians.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Laurel?
Good morning. Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and distinguished members of the committee. My name is Laurel Libby, and I live in Auburn. I'm a nurse, and I worked in the ICU for 13 years. When I started working in the ICU at Maine Medical Center in 2004, there was a relatively new drug called Zygris that we used to treat severe sepsis. In a double-blind placebo-controlled study, mortality rates were 24.7% among Zygris-treated subjects versus 30.8% among subjects treated with placebo. This was a huge breakthrough in the treatment of sepsis. Over the next few years, I also worked in ICU research. I facilitated further Zygris studies, and the medical world kept treating sepsis patients with Zygris, the rock star of severe sepsis treatment. Four years ago, I was admitted to the hospital with pneumonia and severe sepsis. The doctors overseeing my care did not consider treating me with Zygris. That's because in 2011, Eli Lilly voluntarily withdrew Zygris from all markets. This decision was made because the most recent study, double-blind placebo-controlled, showed that not only did Zygris not decrease mortality in sepsis, it increased bleeding risks, including intracranial hemorrhage. My point in bringing up Zygris is that nothing is lost, and so much can be gained by continuing study of any medical treatment, but especially something that is so widely distributed as vaccines. It is truly epic arrogance to assume that we could come close to have already learned all we can about the human body. We have vaccinated our five children. But this fall, when my four-year-old received his flu shot, he had a severe reaction to it. His thigh swelled to almost twice its normal size, and at its worst, I was performing frequent neuro and pulse checks to make sure he had normal function and blood flow. frequent neuro and pulse checks to make sure he had normal function and blood flow. He recovered fully after a week or so, and I never took him in to see the doctor, because I could manage it at home. I did make the mental note not to let him have the vaccine again. Two of my other children have allergies with anaphylactic reactions, and so as a nurse, and a mother, and a person with common sense, I know that that is the correct course of action. His next reaction could be systemic and anaphylactic instead of localized. But because I managed his reaction at home, instead of taking him in and getting it documented, if this bill passes, I won't be able to get a medical exemption. If this bill passes, Maine will lose a nurse and a physical therapist, my husband, when we move to a state that supports freedom of choice. A note that I'm surprised that no one has brought up is the fact that the common cold is a far more likely risk to an immune-compromised child in school than a measles outbreak. And I'm sorry, that's not on my paper. And finally, this country was founded on freedom. Making vaccination mandatory is a complete departure from our founding principles. I don't want the government anywhere near my medical decisions. Where does the slippery slope end? Obesity, heart disease, type 2 diabetes, and smoking kill millions a year. And yes, smoking is a choice of the person, it is not a choice of the person who has second-hand smoke inhaled. Our founding fathers believed in the principles of liberty to such an extent that they fought a war to free us from England's overreach. Looking to those principles, I ask you to please vote no on LD 798.
Thank you. Megan Spencer? Randy Cussa?
Good morning. My name is Senator, sorry. It's been a long day. Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, members of the Educational and Cultural Affairs Committee. My name is Randy Casa. I'm from Warren, Maine. I'm a retired classroom educator, middle school and high school administrator, and I was the school approval and student enrollment specialist at the Maine Department of Education. I'm testifying against LD 798. My testimony is going to be a little chopped up. I'm going to cut most of it, the packages you get. Kind of hefty, but those are attachments, and I note that many of the things that I've got in the attachments are questions that have been asked. Do we have anything? Can you bring it to a work session? I may have that information already for you here. I've also gone through and highlighted it. If you would like, if you went just right to the attachments, A, B, C, I'll cut my testimony out and just go right to my references to the attachments. It might be helpful. An attachment A, none of the relevant infectious diseases, and by that I define that as the ones that Maine students are required to have to attend school public and approve private schools. None of those infectious diseases were addressed at the Maine CDC's 2018 conference. There was no discussion. Attachment B, which doesn't have really much on it, there was in 2017, there was a short presentation done on measles in Maine. Attachment C has a number of slides from that conference. You note there, or the information there, is that there were no measles cases reported in Maine. And this is from Maine CDC between 1996 and 2016. Although 62 cases were reported since 2010, only one case was confirmed. So reported cases are not the same thing as confirmed cases. So when you hear there were 700 or 400 or 800 cases, you have to look into that a little CDC reports, oh, sorry, skipping. Maine CDC Surveillance Report, attachment D, shows in 2017, keep saying that, one measles case, one mumps case, one tetanus case. It's interesting to note that the one mumps case was someone that had already been immunized for mumps, and that there were no cases of rubella since at least 1997. Maine CDC's 2017 infectious disease summary, attachment E. Huge significance here, I'll point out later, bring up later. Maine CDC reports over 9,000 confirmed flu cases with more than 80 deaths in 2017. But flu isn't one of our relative, relevant diseases. I guess you're going to have to read the rest. I apologize.
Thank you very much.
All right. There is a lot of information in there, and a lot of the things in the attachment were questions that were, may answer questions that were brought up before.
Thank you very much, Mr. Casa. Mitchell Brown?
Mitchell's not here, but I think I'd ask him.
I apologize. Mr. Casa, Senator Pugliott has a question for you.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So on the CDC report from the 2017 presentation, the case of mumps that was diagnosed, that person was vaccinated?
Yes, on the right there, it says 100% of the cases, 100% of the one case, were vaccinated. And that highlighted.
Okay.
And I hope I gave you, you have a highlighted copy?
Yeah, for the work session to be helpful, if we could get some information on the number of cases nationally and in the state where individuals who were vaccinated still got the stuff that we're trying to prevent from happening.
Okay. I hadn't seen that information anywhere, although I would have got that one, too. Other questions?
Thank you very much. So I understand Mitchell Brown is left. Laura Parker, from Sydney.
Is it all right if I start before all my materials are distributed?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because it is so late. Senator Millet, honorable members of the Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs, my name is Laura Parker. I am a resident of Sydney, a mother, and a registered nurse, and I am here to testify in opposition to LD 798. Attached to my testimony, you will find the signatures of 192 Maine residents who have asked me to speak for them together as one voice in the name of parental consent. I represent more than nine hours of testimony. But we are testifying together to save you time. I have testified on many subjects here at the State House over the years regarding topics of great variety, seat belts, guns, abortion, state education standards, to name a few. Never have I had as many people ask how to testify, how to be involved, or how to be heard as I have for the bill before you today. People who have never listened to a testimony online in their lives are listening now at almost 1:00 a.m. We stand together as people of all different stripes, parents, grandparents, foster parents, and nurses, parents of children in public school, private school, parents who homeschool, parents such as myself who have children that are both homeschooled and enrolled in public school, those who will determine where they have their children and make their living according to whether or not this bill is enacted. More importantly, people who fully vaccinate their children according to the recommended schedule, people who partially vaccinate, such as myself, people who vaccinate their children at a modified schedule, and people who do not vaccinate their children at all. We stand together advocating for the right to choose what is best for our own families and for our own individual children. I would ask that you count these signatures among the ranks of individuals who are testifying today in opposition to this bill. Secondly, which is not part of my testimony, but I feel I would be remiss not to mention it, I think that sometimes when we talk about the 95% rate of immunization in our state, that we're kind of lulled into a false sense of security. Because I had a needle-stick injury as an RN, and I had to be tested for hepatitis B, hepatitis C, HIV, MRSA, and VRE. The only one of those things that I could have been vaccinated for and was fully vaccinated for was hepatitis B. When they ran my blood and the patient's blood, they found that my blood, despite having been fully vaccinated with hepatitis B vaccines, was not immune. They said that I can repeat the three series, and that if I was not immune after that, that I would never be immune. And I think that as a nurse who was told that I had to have the hepatitis B vaccine in order to work for my employer, or sign a consent saying that I understood the risks, I did have a false sense of security that I would be protected from that vaccine because of my immunizations, and I was not. And I think that the individual who testified earlier today regarding her child's case of pertussis and how hard she had to fight to get that tested for, because the child was already vaccinated, speaks to that issue. Thank you very much for your time and attention, and for being here so late into the evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Jeffrey Slocum?
Yeah, I gave them out there earlier. They were sitting at the table, so they took my stuff and put it in a big box. So it should be somewhere.
It is.
Okay, all right. Good morning, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, distinguished members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. Thank you for being here. Thank you for staying until Thursday morning. I'm a doctor of chiropractic. I've been in practice in Brunswick, Maine for the last 26 years, and I'm a fourth-generation chiropractor. I am a second-generation, non-vaccinated individual, human being. My children are third-generation, non-vaccinated human beings, and they are not dangerous to anybody. Okay? We hear all this conversation tonight. One of the conversations that struck me was talking about non-vaccinated people being bad. And then somebody said, "No, no, no, they're not bad, they're dangerous." That kind of vernacular is really a problem, especially when you have multiple people in the scientific community coming up here and completely having 180-degree opinions about whether vaccines are safe or not, whether they actually impart immunity or just an antibody response. You know, some people in literature and in science would say that there's something called the original antigenic sin. And what the original antigenic sin says is that when you vaccinate, what you do is you shut off or you stunt the immune response in a human being, is that you don't create a full immunity, you create an antibody response. So if that virus, or whatever you're vaccinating for, has this part, and you signal that part, and then that changes, the next time it comes around, it's got this part and that part, it only responds to this. So this is the part that gets you, because you never created a full immunity in the first place. So the original antigenic sin would say that we've actually created a less healthy population through our vaccine series. So I want to go way back to 1864 and talk about a doctor named Semmelweis. So Semmelweis was practicing in a hospital, and there were physicians, and there were nurse practitioners delivering babies. And what they were finding is that in the physician's side, women were having perpiral fever, or what they called child bed fever. Children and mothers were dying. On the nurse practitioner's side, that wasn't happening. So Dr. Semmelweis wanted to find out what was going on. And one of the things he found out is that on the physician's side, when they had a child, they rang a bell. So he thought, okay, it must be ringing the bell that's making people die. This is 1864, right at the beginning of time with medicine, right? So they figured that wasn't it. So then he found out what they did is they went through with a smoke machine or something like that to kind of smudge the delivery rooms or whatever. After that, they thought, oh, it's that. It wasn't that. What they found out was that the physician's side, they weren't washing their hands, but on the nurse practitioner's side, they were. So they found out, what Dr. Semmelweis found out, was that it was hygiene, that was, lack of hygiene was causing these deaths. So what the nurse practitioners knew, physicians didn't know, well, long story short, is Semmelweis actually had his career ruined for finding that out, because it went against what established medicine wanted people to believe. Okay? That's been the history of this thing the whole time, right? Don't question medicine. If you do, you're dangerous, you're a hypocrite.
Mr. Slocum, can you wrap it up, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're a hypocrite, you're hysterical. It's not the fact. The facts are, is that vaccines do injure people. There's no proof that they're any more effective than hygiene is at public safety, and we can't make laws that mandate people do things against their conscience and their health. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum.
Madam Chair, I didn't catch his name.
Mr. Slocum?
Slocum.
Laura Columbia? Are you still here? No. Nathan McCann, Susanna Hall, Elena McGuire, Heidi, Giuliano, are any of you here? Susanna Hall?
Good morning, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the committee. My name is Susanna Hall. I am here today presenting my husband's testimony. He would have preferred to give his speech himself. However, due to his life-threatening smell-sensitive allergy to peanuts, this is not a safe environment for him. My name is Eric F. Hall, a Maine native and former businessman in the Belfast area, presently residing in Parkman. My wife and I have been married over 40 years. We have seven grown children and 31 grandchildren. I have lived with a severe allergy to peanuts since my childhood immunizations. This allergy has nearly taken my life many times, and has caused me numerous hospitalizations and expenses. I am very concerned for the condition of our state. Last I knew, the state of Maine is the oldest population per capita in the Union. I have heard of the universities desiring to create incentive programs to attract and keep young people in our aging-out economy. Our school systems have had to consolidate student bodies and eliminate unnecessary buildings. I recently heard on the radio that our snowplow drivers are aging out, and we could be facing a driver shortage next winter. In short, the state has been hemorrhaging our youth to greener pastures for some time now. If this draconian bell passes, which is a blatant violation of our constitutional rights, I will personally encourage every young family I know of to get out of Dodge. Take their skills, their families, and their dollars somewhere else, but don't stay here any longer. Go where you'll be appreciated and your rights respected. If you really want to be admired by your constituency, then use your legislative right weight to force Big Pharma to come clean with the real medical research, and pay the expenses incurred by every family that struggles every single day caring for children that have been handicapped by their poisons. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Nathan McCann?
Good morning, members of the committee. I wasn't planning on speaking today, so I kind of have to spend listening, and I wrote down some notes that I'd like to share with you. First of all, even if we assume that vaccines are 100% safe and 100% effective, it is totally crazy, like insane, to think that these vaccines, which contain different ingredients in the United States than they do in any other country, should be mandatory for anybody. Good ideas do not need to be implemented using force of, like threat of force. I have five children that I plan to never have vaccinated again. Three of them are totally 100% unvaccinated. One of them came out of the foster system and was up to date on his vaccinations when he came to live with us. And one of them had, like, one dose of vaccinations when she was born in the hospital. If this law is passed, we will never enroll our children in any school where they need to be vaccinated. And sadly, because this is not just something that is happening in Maine, I don't know where we would go. There are bills being proposed in 30 states to either completely eliminate any exemptions or to restrict informed consent rights for people who are seeking to vaccinate or to The National Childhood Vaccine Injury Act of 1986 makes vaccines a liability-free product with special protections that are offered to vaccine manufacturers that are unthinkable for any other industry, not even other branches of the pharmaceutical industry. Drugs that kill people are removed from the market. Doctors who kill people by prescribing incorrect medications lose their medical licenses, but vaccine manufacturers are protected, even if their vaccines kill people. There's this VAERS vaccine adverse effect reporting system. I think that's what that stands for. And they have paid out $3.5 billion in the past 30 years to people who have been injured by vaccines. This is not something that, like, only happens rarely. That's a lot of money. There are thousands of people who have had their lives affected, millions. I mean, just to be silly, when I plug my headphones into my phone, like, so I can listen to some music, and I go to turn up the volume, there's literally a warning there that says that listening to my music at a high volume can injure my hearing, because if they don't have that, I could sue the company that makes my phone. Like, this is ridiculous that you are even considering this. Somebody else shared some thoughts, and she was cut off, and it looks like my time is up. Thank you. Oh, yes, thank you. Any questions? I forgot my hat, so, yeah.
What town are you from?
I'm from Freehen.
Thank you.
Elena McGuire?
Okay, I think I'm going to cut some things out. I know you guys can read them. Good morning, Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the committee. I am Elena McGuire. I live in Parkman, and I'm 14 years old. In this state, I have the right to decide to be whichever gender I want to be. I can even abort a baby without my parents knowing. If I have that freedom, why should I not also have the right to decide what goes in my body? I see this bill as being a complete violation to my rights. This is my body. I need to be able to retain the freedom to decide what goes into it. Furthermore, when I have children someday, I don't want to vaccinate them and risk hurting them. Many doctors don't even vaccinate their own children. Why? Why? In the 1950s, rancid peanut oil was used for a base for the virus. As a result, there were many who suffered from peanut allergies, one of whom is my grandfather, who is severely allergic and has almost lost his life over a dozen times due to the vaccination-generated problem. Between the 1900s and 2011, to reduce the potency of the virus, they filtered them several times through aborted human fetuses, chick embryos, monkey kidneys, and brains, horse jugular vein. This is not only downright disgusting, but is extremely inhumane and a barbaric practice. Raising the animals costs too much, so in 2012, they decided that since human cancer tumors are all over the place and free, they would use them for filtering their vaccines. Gross. Schabner, Ph.D. of Australia, studied 35,000 pages of medical documents dealing with vaccinations. And her massive study concluded there was no evidence of her safety or effectiveness of vaccines. So this is my main point. If a medical procedure has risks, it should be my choice and not forced. I have another question. If vaccines, if they so protect you, then why are you worried about people getting these diseases? Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Elena. Any questions? Thank you for your testimony. Deirdre O'Neil, Chris McGee, Malena Christina, Roman Christina, David Tannhauser, please come to the front row. And we'll start with Deirdre.
I think she already went.
Okay. Chris? Chris McGee? Chris McGee? Okay, no. Malena Christina?
Good morning, Senator Mullet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the committee. My name is Malena, and I live in Penobscot County. Thank you for considering what I have to say. I oppose LD 798 for the following three reasons. First, I personally know of several individuals whose lives have been deeply harmed due to a negative reaction to the vaccinations they received, one such as my father, who nearly died on more than one occasion suffering from the ill effects of the vaccinations he received as a child. There are simply too many statistics for one to ignore the detrimental and often life-threatening effects that vaccinations have on many individuals. If someone wants to receive a vaccination to protect themselves or their children, they should be free to do so. But please do not force all loyal citizens of this state to be subject to what may be effective for some and life-threatening for others. Secondly, while I'm sure many individuals who support this bill may be well-meaning, good people, I question the true motives of the broader system supporting this bill since there are many logical inconsistencies in their arguments. Ironically, those who promote these measures at a national level often claim they actually support freedom of choice. On the one hand, they say that it is my right to choose to end my unborn baby's life. Yet should I choose to preserve this God-given life, which I value and love, they now desire to remove my choice in decisions regarding my child's health and well-being. Surely, we can all recognize the hypocrisy of all this when it should be the other way around. Thirdly, whatever your individual convictions are regarding vaccinations, I believe personally that medical choices should not be mandated by the state, period. This violates the basic tenets of personal responsibility and freedom that this nation was founded on. Regardless of what political party you support, we can all agree that these last few years have shown us how volatile and fragile our governmental system can be. Probably everyone here disagrees with our governmental response in one area or another. Do you really want to entrust your personal medical decisions into the hands of a government whose decisions shift dramatically depending on political or industry pressure? What may seem like a good thing today may be come back to bite you later. Vaccinations are only the tip of the iceberg. If we give up our rights in this area, there is no logical end to the medical decisions the government may one day impose on your life. Where will it stop? I love the original freedoms and values that made this nation great, and I'm asking you to do everything in your power to preserve these freedoms which thousands before us have given their lives and bled to buy. Also, this isn't on the paper that you have, but after hearing everything today, I just can't help but wonder, if vaccinations are so effective, then all the people who are vaccinated need not worry about it. And if someone who is at high risk gets sick, they ought to blame it on someone who just got their vaccinations and is contagious for a month, and not those healthy, educated individuals who choose otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Malena. Roman Christina, David Tannhauser, Alan.